Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting of Tuesday, July 25, 2017. Would you all like to join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to entertain a motion to approve the expense warrant for 63017 of $27,389.64 and approve the expense warrant for 63017 for $144.
You have that motion?
Second.
And then I would like to have a, entertain a motion to approve the Selectments minutes of 4/11/17 and 7/20/17.
You have that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Announcements, Tyler Rowland from the District Aid to Senator Ann Goby will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from Tuesday, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM Wednesday, July 26th. All are welcome. Does anyone else have any announcements? Good evening. Okay, we'll have public access if anybody says anything to say, they're welcome to come up.
We've got two things, three things. How come we're not hiring an experienced treasurer? We've had past experience problems. I know you're training somebody, she's a good person, but once again, we've had how many treasurers in this town due to the fact that they have no experience or very little experience?
Well, she, she has-
We're falling back into the same thing again.
Well, she has 19 years in municipal government. She is being trained by the interim treasurer and she has also worked as the financial clerk for a couple of months for our assistant treasurer and when she worked in another community, she worked for a department that she handled all of their payroll and their expenses and she's quite, we felt that she was quite experienced for this position and somebody who, and we really wanted somebody with municipal experience. So we feel that she's a very fast learner with every job that she's done up here and she's going to treasurer school in August with the rest of them and we feel she's a good choice.
Linda, you really want me to believe that load of crap is yours?
It's not crap, Dave.
Mr. Whole crap.
Wait a minute.
Ms. Chairman.
I'm just, what I'm saying to you-
No, no, it's not, it's, I'll tell him, it's not-
That's unfair, that is unfair.
No, I know, I don't want to hear that kind of language, Dave.
I can use that word.
But the point is, we're telling you the truth. We have, we've checked, we have checked her out, she's very capable, she's worked here for us in the town of Brookfield, she's a very fast learner and she's done very well in any position that she's done.
She's excellent worker, you're missing my whole point again. It takes years to become a treasurer. We've had several problems in this town for years now because we do not have an experienced treasurer.
Well, we had-
And we do not have one, you can say all of what you just said sounds all nice and nice, but, back to my thing, we do not have an experienced treasurer on board. It takes years and years and years.
We-
And the tax colle, the, the houses, getting these tax, getting the taxes back on these old houses, that, nothing's been done on that. It keeps getting put in the back burner.
We were getting things back with our, with our deceased treasurer, she was going, she had a lot of things that she was getting off the books and she had collected a lot of taxes that were tax title money and she did a very good job for us.
Okay, back to my point again.
You have a-
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We have someone who does not agree with our decisions.
Yep.
What I will say is that when we originally re-hired, were attempting to hire, we had a very capable-
Yes.
-treasurer that was going to retire from another town and that she in fact decided that she was going to take the jo, take the job at first and she was going to be able to afford us 960 hours. With that, it was our decision that we would have an assistant, I believe that that would have in fact been Lonnie.
Lonnie, yeah.
And given that Lonnie would have been the assistant, that was, how that was going to work out. As we've made it, made our decisions today, Lonnie now takes the lead responsibility, but what we also did is we hired an experienced retiree to fill in and be the assistant. So what we have is not only do we have Holly and her background, we have Lonnie and her present experience, we have set it up such that she's going to go to training in August and we have an experienced treasurer, retired treasurer, filling in as the assistant. So we have three people with, two of three people having extensive experience and I think it sets the town up for improved treasurer experience over a number of years now with what the Board has done. So, Mr. Whole crap can have his position, we have our position and I think we need to move on.
Okay, well let me tell you, you only have one person who's experienced right now currently, he's only here for three months. Takes years and years to get a treasurer.
We said, we said if we need him longer than the three months, we will extend that period.
Because we're constantly, we're hiring treasurers because of the ones we get are not experienced and we get into trouble.
We constantly hire-
How many have you, how many have you fired? How many treasurers have you fired?
I haven't, I haven't been, I know one, we had two experienced treasurers when I was here and then after I retired, they hired somebody that didn't have any experience, which I did not have anything to do with.
We've had two treasurers we fired and the last treasurer, she was doing a good job, but she was learning the treasurer position as well. And now we're going, we're going for the same thing again, we still can't get things done in this town.
But you cannot find people that have municipal experience, Dave, and you just can't bring somebody in from the public sector and expect them to do the jobs because there's quite a bit that involves the municipal experience to be a treasurer.
We run an eight, nine million dollar budget here, I mean, this is serious business.
Okay, Mr.-
Madam Chair.
I'll yield to Ms. Coughlin.
One thing that, that probably the, the people in Brookfield and a lot of other municipalities are finding out is that, like skilled manufacturing positions, municipal positions that require the level of training that a treasurer does, that the level of training that an assessor does, is becoming one of those critical skill sets that's very scarce in the state of Massachusetts. And like corporations right now, towns are having to make the hard decision of trading their own bench and bringing people in that have the ability to learn it and facilitating it in ways that weren't considered before. I can honestly say I never heard even the thought come from the Select Board previously of bringing in somebody with 40 years' experience as a consultant to train the new treasurer other times that they've made the decision to hire somebody who wasn't experienced. That's a huge fundamental difference in process to what has gone on before and I think it's important for the townspeople to understand it.
Yes, they have to and even where our accountant was concerned, when our original accountant had retired and we, we hired a new accountant, we had an accountant that was well-trained, she probably had over 35 years or better as a town accountant in other communities and she came in and she trained our town accountant we have now who didn't have the experience and she's, she is an accountant and she's doing a very good job here for the town of Brookfield.
Madam Chairman, we'll debate this all night.
Okay, so they-
We have a person that does not agree with us, that's his prerogative.
And we have other things on our agenda.
All right, one more, one more thing to the subject. If everything is, you're saying everybody works good, good up here and working hard, how come the state cut us off of 1.6 million this spring?
They didn't cut us off.
We got it back. They shut us down, Linda. They shut us down. I was at the DOR meeting, five people from the state came in here because we had problems.
They reinstated our money-
Yeah, why did we get cut off? Because five times they notified this town and not one person in this town hall would respond back to the state.
Because they were sending it to the wrong email and it was, because they sent it, they thought that Mr. Comptoir was chairman of the board and that's when the first letter came and he was not the chairman of the board anymore and I was and they did not realize they had a new chairman of the board. And as soon as I got that letter and the town accountant, we had Department of Revenue, we're down here within probably a week or so and they knew-
That's strange, the DOS, they sent it to different departments and no one responded?
No, I don't remember them saying that.
So, why do I was at that meeting?
Well, I don't remember them saying that at all.
So, these are the fundamentals and the things I'm concerned about for our town.
But we're not, we're not-
You got the 1.6 back, yes.
We, we got all of our money back.
Yes.
As soon as they knew that we were having problems and they took, and we had a fix file from the town accountant, she had all the different steps that were going to take place, they accepted what we were going to do and we got all of our money reinstated.
Yeah, I know, I was at the meeting, that's why they're here, because we have problems. Five times no one responds and we get our money cut off.
Five times? I'd like to know who the five times were.
I'm just telling you what they said at the meeting.
I don't remember that at all.
All right, I get the next thing, I want to, you guys were talking about the racetrack, about the permit going to court, the whole nine yards. I'd like to set, set you straight, Linda. The court is over, okay? Town of Brookfield lost, we lost a ton of money, you have, we have no choice, he can do what he wants down there, he doesn't have to have the permit, he gets the permit, he can do what he wants. This noise decibel, it's over. It's a practice racetrack, he can make his own hours and he can do his own thing. We lost in court because we didn't want to work with the person, okay? Last meeting, you were talking about decibels, are you going to go back to court? It's over. We lost.
We have, we have another court date that is set and that's all I'm going to say because I actually shouldn't speak on it because I'm a resident of Quayborg Street who testified when we went to court.
Have you checked to see if that's been canceled?
No, it has been continued.
Okay, but I'm telling you right now, it's a done deal and we should stop harassing the businesses in this town, okay? It's a business, let them do their thing.
If he's a business, then how come he, he's only a practice trust, so supposedly he's not supposed to be a business.
It's a practice track.
Yeah, well, he's doing more than that down there and I'm not going to discuss, I'm not going to discuss it, Dave, anymore.
Well, you, you mentioned this at the last meeting.
Well, I can't, like I just explained to you-
You need to recuse yourself.
I had to refuse myself instead on the other side.
I'm understanding he's met all the permits, EPA, the whole, I guess.
So if Mr. Snyder would like to take over, he can.
I, I think it's important that I do at this point.
Okay.
So that there is a court date and what, what's going to happen at that court date because I've actually talked and talked to the owner. The, the only question that will come out of that is hours of operation. The second thing that I said, I said when we talked about decibel readings at the last meeting was that there are mass general laws that he will and the riders have to comply with. The riders, depending on the make of bike and the manufacturer of bike, have a requirement that at 20 inches from the bike, the decibel reading be 96 dB in one case and it's, I believe, 108 in the other case and so that it's all for rider safety and protection. So that if Linda were to be reading a number that would equate back to something larger or greater than 96 dB, in one case 108 on the other case, that that would suggest that the rider is not in compliance with mass general law and so therefore they would have to comply with mass general law as far as noise being emitted from the bike.
Yeah, that's all mine, but I'm just telling you, what we discussed last meeting was about the court date and that's, it's, it's a done deal, so I think we should just let it be. We didn't, we didn't want to negotiate and the town lost again and that's what happens.
Madam Chairman, again, we have someone that does not agree with this, with the actions of this board, so I'm just-
We're finished.
We're being manipulative, class.
Absolutely not.
Because we have other things we have to take up tonight.
Moving on.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on, we have Lake Road deed discussion and if our assessor, Al Jones, would like to come up and maybe Herb Chafee would like to come up also and we'll talk about that. Jeff, do you have a copy of this?
I didn't bring mine.
I didn't bring mine with me.
Would you share?
Yeah, because I brought mine up. You can, you can share.
I do have a copy.
Yeah, I have a copy, it's in my bag.
We can share.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this was brought to us by Mr. Chafee.
That's correct.
Mr. Chafee, because from my understanding where these properties are out on Lake Road, somebody was putting a, a well in which we think is town property and they said-
When they originally had the well state, it was going to be right on the edge of town property, that's correct. Then, in the meantime, they had engineers and everything else and they moved it to a different location. But the biggest problem is deeds that-
The deeds, yes, I know. And this was something, and I know that Al's done a lot of work on this and this goes way back to 2005 and I don't know if they should have corrected, been corrected over 12 years ago, I don't think that the deeds, people had bothered to read the deeds to see actually what was going on out there.
That's exactly what happened.
That's what happened.
Four deeds came through with the plan land and it doesn't look like anybody really ever investigated to make sure that it was a legitimate plant. It has the, the ownership, the bounds of it on the opposite side of this road, which can't be, can't be experienced. So the actual, so in, on 9/28/04 is when the survey was done by Richard Power, Power Land Surveying, it's still around, it's-
Oh, he's gone.
He's deceased, yeah.
No, I think Donald is gone. Richard, I believe is still around.
No, Richard, no, Rick, he was up in New Braintree, I think, he's gone because he's done.
Donald, yes.
Because he did work for us and he's passed away.
Did work for me.
Okay, I'm not, I don't know, I know Donald, I didn't know Richard, so.
Okay.
The, the Planning Board approved, the Brookfield Planning Board approved the, the plan of land that was put in front of them on October 13th of '04. The plan was registered with the Worcester County Register of Deeds, Registry of Deeds on February 8th of '05 and then 14 deeds covering the four properties came through on March 24th of '05. So, I, in my mind, the, the bounds should be on the same side of Lake Road as the properties. And I believe that was the intent of Mr. Jepson when he commissioned the plan of land to be done. So, in my mind, somebody needs to have this surveyed and have an accurate survey, whether, whether contacting Power Land Surveying, if there's anybody that would help us, I don't know. The fact that we signed off on it, I don't know where that leads us legally going way back. The other question I have is, Lane 24, is that still considered a town road? Is it a private right of way? Because there's no mention of that in the new deeds.
My understanding, I don't know if Herb could correct me, when we started out originally years ago with the 9/11, we made all those lanes so that, you know, if there was emergency calls, people knew where to go. But are they considered private roads or are they considered-
The 24, I'm not sure if it got done out here through the town, but I know it's some lawyer had come across to have that turned back over to the residents. Whether or not that got done legally or not, I don't know.
What about-
Right now, it's a, to me, it's a private road.
It's a private road.
It was the original Lake Road.
Right.
And when they straightened it out, this piece was left.
Yes, I, I know where, it's been like that for years, yeah.
Yeah, probably, I don't know, probably in the 60s or 70s or something, way back.
Way back, I remember that.
And that was still all town property at one time.
Yeah, because it was like a little grass strip that's out there.
Right.
And the grass strip was town property.
And it's the grass strip that now, is one well and one or two septics on?
Two septics.
Which are, you know, that, they went through all the permitting process and nobody did anything illegal there, I'm not aware of. But that land is theirs and the question is, does the septic actually, do the pipes run under Lane 24, which is a town road? Or is it not a town road? Has it been abandoned? I couldn't find anything where it indicated that we had ever abandoned it, but you would-
Should be something in either Selectman's Office or Town Meeting, I'm-
How far, we just say we'll go back. I'm trying to think, when we first stepped-
I'm saying probably about 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago at least.
So have we alerted the landowners that we have a conflict?
We, we probably should alert them, we do have a conflict.
It's probably time.
Yeah.
That's a potential conflict, I don't know-
Yeah, potential conflict and then the next action would be Para, to see if Para, anyone in the Para organization exists today.
Well, according, according to the deeds that have been done in Worcester there, I took the measurements from the deeds that exist now for it and it does go from the pond side all the way across Lake Road to the other bound that's over there.
And I'm, the only reason-
And it's in the new deeds.
And what I'm saying, Herb, is was there anything in the, in the case of Para that they did that prompted them to go to the other side of Lake Road? Yeah, just as research.
At the time, it was all Jepson, I believe, where Jepson had owned that land, he may have already sold it to-
Yeah, full-
He sold it to the town of Brookfield when they straightened the road out back.
Right, but the other side, the other side of the road, on the other side of Lake Road, at one point, Jepson owned that.
Jepson owned it and then it went to Fuller Cadillac and then he sold it to the, um-
But I get a feeling that Jepson, Mr. Jepson, his, he said, "I owned over here and now I don't own that, the rest of it I want to go to the people." And we've never thought that, okay, the rest of that means that the pin should actually be on the other side of the road. That would be my guess as to what happened.
So we'd have to do some kind of research to find out actually what Mr. Jepson's intentions were.
At the time-
Is the historic deeds available at all?
Going way back?
Yeah, oh yeah, there's all kinds of things from the book going way back.
But there's, well, the deed, there's a deed in the packet that I gave you and that gives power of attorney to Warner Fletcher for Mr. Jepson and that lists a whole bunch of stuff. I didn't want to go too deep into it because I'm not sure where we go. This was a first, just a first pass.
So did the town sell the property to these owners?
Which property?
Back to-
No.
Just, Jepson, if I get this straight, is that the Jepsons owned to the, to the pond?
Correct. Well, they owned to the-
They did own the pond at one time because we used to call it Jepson's Beach years ago.
But they, these lots were here, they were pre-existing and then he just, they just extended the lot lines across to Lake Road.
So that was, those individuals extended to Lake, the other side. So I think we, we need to notify those property owners, the current property owners of those lots, that-
That can give Karen that information.
Yeah, that in fact, this map is now showing that you're to the other side of Lake Road, which can't be because the town owns the road. And so therefore, there needs to be a correction made. And at, at this point, we need to be in agreement between the landowners and ourselves as to how to proceed with this.
And there may be two ways to proceed with it, as I understand it, Madam Chair. One of them would be that the, that in essence, the land ended at the Lake Road, what do you call it, right of way.
Yeah.
Okay? And that the strip on the other side naturally belongs to that other landowner that's, that's now on the other side of the road.
It just goes right to the, to the outside of the road.
It just goes to the outside of the road, right? There's nothing but water on the other side, right?
It's almost like a horseshoe drive out.
This would be town.
Right, yeah.
It goes right to the edge of the town, what I would consider the town, the town right of way.
Town, town's right of way, okay.
It does not include, which is now the state on the other side.
State on the other side, okay. So it, it could be that the, you know, the land boundary ought to end at the right of way or it could just be that there ought to be a, a granting of a, of a easement to the town through that property. I mean, it could, it could go either way in essence.
I don't know, you don't want an easement.
No, yeah, I don't think we want an easement up there.
They don't go along across, I can't picture another spot in town where there's a public road.
But that's an easement.
My knowledge, there's a deed that says a private person owns the road.
So we just have to have Karen, I think, get in touch with the owners that are involved with this and tell them there's a property, there's a problem with the deeds and maybe we should see if we can contact and see if there is anybody around with the Para Land Surveying, Surveying Company.
The lawyer that did all the deeds is no longer practicing law.
Well, yeah, because I know he's, he's up there in age with the Jepsons.
Well, he's, he's with me, so I don't know for that far.
Oh, no, I thought he was, no, I, I thought he was an-
You're talking Warner Fletcher.
Yes, that's what I-
Ed Neal did 14.
Oh, Ed Neal, yeah, I know, Ed Neal was the one, and didn't he do this with another firm out of Southbridge, if I read right in some of these?
Yes, and he lived in one of the four houses at the time.
Yeah, because he lived right next door, yeah, I know where he lived.
From an assessment standpoint, I've adjusted it so that, the adjustment reads that it, that the actual acreage of the lots is only to one side of Lake Road.
Yeah.
They're not bank axes, they don't have they ever for a crock to the, for the actual Lake Road.
So we haven't, but we have not been charging them for that?
We have not been charging for any of this.
Yeah.
We had never added from an assessing.
We didn't know any of this until Herb came up with it and brought-
No, it went through, I mean, so many of this did years ago.
Oh, yes, I knew that it went through, but it actually wasn't read back then in 2005. So for 12 years, it's kind of been, nobody knew anything about it.
Madam Chairman, could I, could I respond to this? He was my attorney, he, for money, he told me, I helped him get the house when he wanted and all that stuff, but he told me that the land, that piece you're talking between Rice Corner Road and the actual Lake Road, which is the old piece, he told me that, that all the owners owned the whole road and that piece, that's how they did it. And that's why they were able to put the septic system where it is now, because they took it. He told me they, he got it back from the state or something and now they are-
Well, I don't know how they got it back from the state because it was-
I'm just telling you what he told me, and that road that you've been following there, that is now owned by those four people, so.
Well, if you're following-
Well, he said, she said things, Dave. That's what it is.
None of the deeds, unfortunately, none of the deeds specified that, they should have, if that's the case, then if you live next door to me and we're both on this private right of way, that I should have in my deed that I can go across yours and vice versa and nothing was ever-
I'm just telling you that little piece that he told me.
No, but there's nothing, like, like Al says, there's nothing in the deeds that says that.
Yeah, I would check with him and his wife and then that might help the honor a bit.
So what would be the steps to reconcile it? Is first we just contact the property owners?
Yeah, we should contact the property owners and then we should also see if there's anybody still doing work at Para Surveyors, which I don't, I don't even know if anybody is anymore.
And get them to redraft the site plan.
Yeah.
In essence, and re-file with the Registry of Deeds, is that what the steps are? Like, if everyone, if everyone is, was in agreement about, about where those property lines truly should be, let's say that all of the property owners were like, "Yeah, we just were supposed to get up to the road."
If the intent, if they all agree that the original intent was-
If everybody agrees that the original intent was take it to the road, okay, what would the next step be, just to get a new site plan?
In my mind, you would have an accurate plan of land for those four lots created, approved by Planning Board, because it's now a different planning and then it would, and if everybody at that point is in agreement, then it would become a registered, it would get registered.
Yeah, registered.
The other question behind it is, is there anything on the deeds that needs to be added to allow this? Because if they have run septics underneath, we also need to find out whether or not the town abandoned that road.
Okay.
Because if they didn't, like Old Rice Corner Road, Old Rice Corner Cross Road was a part of the same, that was part of the road that was straightened out. That is still, that was never abandoned, that's a public road and this is just another piece of it, so I-
And the other section of Lake Road that's over there, it's still part of town.
So that's something I know would probably have to be researched in the old town meeting records, too, because you have to vote on all of this when you abandon a road at a town meeting, so there's a lot of research that would have to go along with this.
I would imagine, and if you can't find that, you know, then you'd have to figure out, you don't want to do that now.
Yeah, we may have to take it to town.
Well, I'm trying to think if there was a list of abandoned properties.
I just want to say, I just looked up on my phone and it says Para Land Survey in Southbridge, is run by Richard Power Land.
And that's who did this.
Richard, oh, so there is, so they are still there, Richard, okay. All right, well, we should probably contact him.
349 Ashland Avenue, Southbridge, Massachusetts.
A call you need to make, Al.
Yeah, Al, if you'll-
They're not going to listen to me. No, we need a higher authority, that's why we come to you every day.
Well, I think that, we can give you the whole manifesto, but I think you're the one that should, you're the one that should call Para.
I have no jurisdiction, I have nothing.
We have absolutely no knowledge.
But the Board of Selectmen, in my mind, this falls for the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, Karen.
But, but I think-
I'm the one willing to sit there, I'll go over, I'll sit with you on a conference call.
We can, we can probably do a conference, Karen and myself and you, we should do a conference.
I don't need any response. You are making sure to make any decisions on this one.
No, no, I, that's what I was saying, we should probably do a conference call with Mr. Para, then we'll get in touch with him over this. So we'll make arrangements, maybe within the next week or before we come back for the next meeting, we'll, we'll get some kind of an answer on what we're going to do.
Sure, I can talk to Karen tomorrow, we can set up a time, maybe get something tomorrow on it, but I really don't feel comfortable.
Oh, I understand that, no, it should come from, if you'll sit in, because you do know more about this than all of us, because you've researched it.
A little bit, yeah.
A little bit. I think you've taken quite a bit, a lot out.
Well, if I do it versus- Well, if I do it versus our legal attorneys, then...
You probably saved us about $5,000 already, Al, thank you.
Are there any other questions with the...
No, I don't think so. I can't think of anything at the moment.
Karen, I'll get you the info tomorrow, start with the four homeowners, but it's actually two of the parcels are owned by the same groups, it was really only three, three. And I can get you that, their, I'll get you what their, we have for their billing address for tax purposes.
All right, you need to write a synopsis of what, you know, what you said tonight, just something I can put in a letter?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're gonna sign it?
You're just ghostwriting now.
Herb, do you want to stay up? And you, we'll talk about...
You want to jump to number five?
Yeah, yeah, why don't we have, while Al's here, Herb can say, we're gonna just jump up to number five, because Al is here, is to sign the CAMA contract. Okay, let's get that one.
So this one has to do with the CAMA?
Do you have, do you have the contract?
I have the contract ready, yeah. I'm just gonna explain it quick if you want me to.
Sure.
CAMA is the software that we use to assess land, commercial, residential, open, and now all the buildings in town. We've been using a state system for a long time. About six months ago, my land came before you, and a decision was made to go with the state. I was a doubting Thomas, the first one to admit it, and I've spent a lot of time with other vendors, as well as the state IT folks, and they finally convinced me last week, and they've come a long way, that I think financially it's the best solution. Software-wise, it's probably not the best, but I think I couldn't in my mind, way where spending that much more for software would help us out.
The value's not there.
We have no, no reporting capabilities now, so if somebody asks for something, it takes two, three hours sometimes to create something that they have a CAMA reporter. So it makes sense to me to go forward with what Marlene had presented way back when. There's trainings included, mappings included, everything appears, and there's some customization. Initially, they were talking, just, they were, it was targeted towards large towns. And I raised that question, and they now have, it's not Conley, maybe Conley, one of the smaller towns, so that as a, as a beta, there's somebody like us, it's not just targeted toward bigger.
How many towns have actually signed on with this?
Forty-seven, forty-four, forty-seven, somewhere in the forty. We need forty with the magic number. Some of our neighbors have gone with it, some are not.
Have the other Brookfields, have they gone along with it?
East is going to a company called Vision, which I'm very familiar with them at the past, but the cost would have been fairly prohibitive. This is a ten-year agreement. The first seven years are set, and they won't raise the price. Right now, we're paying thirty-seven seventy-five, the price goes up to thirty-eight oh-five for the next seven years. So there's probably gonna be some other costs associated, but there are some out there with that. And then after that, it goes up for the last three years, either their standard raise or cost of living, CPI plus three percent. And so then after that, ten years out, we make a decision that we don't want to stay with it. So I think it's, there's really nothing we can change in the contract. It's either we say yes, or we say, "We're not interested, we're gonna go find another solution." So I'm not trying to jam anything down your throat.
No, but if you feel that this is the best solution right now in the problem...
It seems to me, yeah. So, are you beyond for signing it, whether you want to sign it now?
Motion to sign the CAMA contract.
Second.
Two yes, there's a yes here that agrees that Mass IT will work collaboratively with us, and I said yes to that, and there's another yes section where it'll allow Tyler Technologies, which is the company doing this, as well as Mass IT, to have access to our data. Seems pretty standard. And then other than that...
Show me what's ready to be signed.
You might sign it, title and date it, and I'll get a copy of this to you.
We're all in favor of signing this?
All we have to do is say, I think it's just you, because it's just the...
Yeah, yeah, but we have to get it from the board.
Yeah, you have a motion, you have a second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Al, there you go. You're all in.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Herb, we'll have you back up here with our Chapter 90 request. We, we have a Chapter 90 request here from the Highway Superintendent to lease a dresser loader and to use Chapter 90 money. Are we not gonna lease it now?
I'm gonna do a lease purchase.
A lease purchase, okay.
On a law. Not a dresser.
Oh, gee, she had it right here, dresser loader.
That's to replace it.
Oh, this is to replace, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, this is to request for a three-year lease purchase on a 2017 544K John Deere loader. And, and the estimated cost of it is $183,948, and the annual amount each year would be $6,316, and this would come from Chapter 90 money.
That's correct.
So you have a motion to proceed.
Okay, do you want to discuss anything, Herb?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, we just got a motion.
Yeah, I second it specifically for discussion. I second it for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay, Mr. Eaton, do you, what's your question?
Just that the CIPC hasn't reviewed this, and we are having a special meeting on Tuesday at 11 o'clock to review this specific request.
Okay, well, I know the town accountant's already signed off on it, and I'll probably sign off on it tonight. You want us to, do you want me to sign off on this tonight, or do you want...
If you guys agree to it, that's fine, and I'll still meet with them on Tuesday, that's all, discussable.
Okay, all in favor of signing? Do you have any more questions, Beth?
Mr. Chair, you know, the Select Board supported the CIPC. And, you know, intuitively, I think it's probably the right decision, but I really think that we need to have a review by CIPC of this project.
But the money, it is coming though from Chapter 90 money. It's not money that we actually have to appropriate for this.
So, Madam Chair, the challenge is, and it's, and I can kind of fall on either side of this discussion, in that initially, my, my gut instinct said we placed the replacement of the dresser loader in the original capital plan back in, in 2013, for I believe it was fiscal year either 15 or 16.
2015.
Yeah. It's 15 would be the fiscal year 16, but it's, it's in that, in that general vicinity, okay? We chose not to do it. I, I, if I recall properly, there were some other more critical projects going on that, that took the Chapter 90 money at the time. The Superintendent made a very appropriate choice in funding those activities first.
Nothing against the board that's out there and everything else, but there's been boards out there before that this stuff, all the paperwork's gone to, with, you know, paperwork to go down the line for this, 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 and nothing has ever happened. There's been three vehicles that have been replaced down there, and that board has nothing to do with it, had nothing to do with it at the time, because it wasn't active enough to take...
Now, now to, now to Mr. Eaton's point, Madam Chair, I think what he's, he's asking for is that since we're in the process of reconciling our town finances, we're in the process of standardizing our financial policies and procedure books, we've got to start somewhere in at least walking the paperwork through the appropriate procedures, okay? And I think we don't want to disrespect the folks that are on the CIPC by necessarily saying we're absolutely gonna do this regardless of what you say. You know, well, it could get perceived that way. If we go ahead and just approve and say, "Hey, we're gonna do this, and this is your courtesy copy, CIPC," without them giving any type of input, it...
Then I'm, then I'm, I'm not gonna say it's a violation right now of that committee, because we've already approved two projects and stuff in town with Chapter 90 money to move forward on capital improvement.
Right. That are things that, that probably normally ought to route through there. And it's something, but we've got it...
But roads in Chapter 90 has, the only people that have control of that is the Board of Selectmen, Highway Department, and the Mass DOT.
And the town accountant also.
Well, the town accountant has...
Yeah, she has to sign off on it.
Right.
Madam Chair, we don't make the decision on it. We just analyze it, review it, and make a recommendation. The decision is still with Herb and the Select Board. We don't have any authority to decide on it. We just, part of our responsibility as CIPC is to analyze and to vet these projects and to assist the advisory committee and the Selectmen in helping them make the decision. That's what our role is.
I understand that.
You know, we don't have any authority, you do, but we just would like the responsibility, we're given the responsibility, we would like to take the responsibility of reviewing. And we're talking about Tuesday to do it, and we're having a special meeting. I hope Mr. Chayke can...
We just appropriated $230,000 to do that bridge project down there in the past week from Mass DOT.
Yeah, the CIPC is...
Had nothing to do with that.
Well, I know, we just been formulated, just recently that CIPC has been formulated.
I, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Snyder.
Where it is Tuesday, given the opportunity to go through what the plan was, because at our last, at the last Selectmen's meeting, we had a couple, well, actually, the last two Selectmen's meetings, we went through a review of the ideas of Chapter 90 money and where things were going to be, the priority list. So we've, we've done that. As far as this body has talked about what our direction was, and this was included in that plan. Again, Herb, between now and next Tuesday, is there anything that's gonna change?
No.
So, so what I would do is I would motion to table, the motion for tonight, to the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, given the Tuesday meeting, it would be a week from Tuesday that we would come back together to sign that document. I think it's...
Does it have, do you want it signed any sooner than our next?
No, you can wait.
Okay, so we can wait until we meet again Tuesday?
But I, time certain, we're gonna have this in front of us two weeks today, given that the meeting takes, takes place next Tuesday, and we go through those priorities, because you provided an excellent list of priorities and rationale for the priorities.
Well, there's a lot of priorities out in the town of Brookfield that needs to be addressed a lot quicker than all the things.
Exactly. So I think, to support the CIPC, I think it's, it's a win-win to be able to do that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, I'd like to take...
Just hold it until next Sunday.
Sure, okay.
You can talk to whoever's the chairperson for the meeting, we'll go for it.
Okay, well, I'd like to take and vote to a motion.
Motion to, table this to a time certain.
Till two weeks, after the CIP committee goes over this.
Yep, and again, it's gonna be an education process for them, because again, Herb and the Highway Department has put together a list of priorities, rationale for those priorities, this being right on the next, the next pick on the list.
Yep, I'll second that.
Alan, David?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next on. Peter, do you know if Donna was gonna come up and talk? Donna was supposed to come up and talk to us. You're gonna come and talk to us?
Yeah, Peter has, Donna has family, I think that'd be nice.
Oh, okay. So Peter, you're not on the agenda? Where's the agenda? Can I show you your agenda?
Oh, jeez, absolutely.
I don't have it. Here, thank you, Karen.
It should be attached to the cover, isn't it?
No, I took it off, I don't know what I did with it. Okay. Chief LaFleur was in last Thursday after we had adjourned from the meeting, and she came in to talk to me about a lot of ambulance calls that had been going down at the racetrack, and she didn't know we were aware of them, and she wanted to come in and talk to us about it.
Hello? She just said that you were just looking for information as to how many calls we've done down there. And we look back three years, we've done ten, or we've done nine, you just looked at only one over there. So, ten calls in three years.
But she had also said, too, that a lot of these people actually aren't even Brookfield people that you've been treating.
I don't think we've transported a Brookfield resident.
No, she said they've come out even as far as from New Jersey, that they're coming down. And she also thinks that there's a lot that we don't know about, because if I remember right, Karen, did she say that she thinks that they've been transporting in their own vehicle?
In some cases, we kind of remember that, but we can't. Because in most cases, even the nine-1-1 system, one of them that activated to police or on post, one of them where, but we reserve that in passing from other agents that, or from agents that, well, and so until last week, we got banged up, and we went to the hospital, they're then, can't handle those transports, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, we, do we have, I know, we do have a few people here tonight, you know, that are neighbors down there with the racetrack, and I don't know if they want to bring up anything about this this evening. Mrs. Robidoux?
Hi, I'm Megan Robidoux. I live actually right down on Route 9, 45 South Maple Street, and I actually just wanted to come by because, really just to voice our opinion about how much the racetrack has affected our personal life. It's really been tremendous over the, especially over the past year and a half, how much the noise has really affected us personally. We actually, when we bought our house, we actually, we know we're right on Route 9, and we really live off the back of our house, and it's gotten to the point where we actually really cannot enjoy our backyard at all anymore when the racetrack is operating. We actually have a large deck off the back of our house. My family comes over quite often, we actually do all of our holiday parties and personal parties at my house, and we cannot even be outside anymore during that time. It's gotten that bad. And if we do, we actually, it's to the point where we actually have to raise our voices to talk to each other. It's extremely annoying. It's just, it's, it's not enjoyable at all. And actually, we actually have to keep the windows closed, too, we can't even get fresh air. So it's just, it's really changed a lot, and we can't enjoy our house anymore. So, you know, I'm really just asking the town to consider whether or not the practice track is the best fit for the town at this time. You know, I'm not a person to ever stand in the way of small business, or people having fun for that matter at all, but, you know, clearly, I feel like from the beginning with the practice track, I feel like we were a little bit misled about how many people would be there at the track, and how busy it would be, and how loud it would be. Secondly, I feel like if that's not an option, I don't know, I'm not a professional as far as the bylaws of the town, but I would propose a, a noise ordinance of some sort, because I just feel like there's no time for us to ever even enjoy our backyard anymore. And if it's not only time restriction, but the hours of operation, engine size, whether or not there's silencers on the pipes, or, you know, again, I'm not a professional in that type of thing, I'm sure that there's right people to make those decisions. And also, what are the registration requirements and registration regulation requirements for a business to that extent? I'm sure like a business that must be, the oversight must be extremely stringent, and I would just encourage the town themselves, who's really monitoring? Are the, are the vehicles themselves registered? I know out-of-state vehicles, if they're registered out-of-state, they, it doesn't count in Massachusetts. Is anybody watching that? Age restrictions, helmets, safety equipment? I'm just wondering about the oversight on the property themselves. I'm just wondering about the oversight on the property themselves. So, you know, just overall, what's going on down there is my question.
Well, I want Mr. Snyder to speak because I'm a resident down that area, too, and I have objections to the track.
And so, I think it's important that who has jurisdiction. As you heard earlier, the town, in fact, did take the track to court. And with that, there will be a judgment as to hours of operation, that there will be agreements to hours of operation because it was unclear with the judgment that took place, whether or not there was an understanding of hours of operation. What I've understood from Mr. Plume is that he, in fact, the earlier negotiate, quote-unquote, "unnegotiated" hours was, in fact, the hours that he was going to conduct. So, I think at the court date, and again, I can't remember the date, that there will be a confirmation of hours of operation. So, at least he'll have that firm as to when he can and cannot operate.
Is that something that is negotiable, that is being talked about?
It was... It was... There was an attempted negotiation. That attempted negotiation failed. Given that negotiation, there were about nine items on that letter of points of dispute. One of the areas of dispute was hours of operation, and he, in fact, has said that what was on that original negotiation was, in fact, going to be his hours of operation. So, I think the twenty... Whatever this court date, when it does take place, there will be a confirmation of the actual hours of operation. So, that's the first piece of understanding and having a clearer understanding as to hours of operation. Second piece to this is that the environmental police have then jurisdiction on the idea of registration. From what I understand, they have, in fact, gone down there, and there have been those that have been noted as not in compliance with their registrations, and therefore, they could not race. And the other piece of it is that the town, in fact, did purchase a decibel meter. And what I would do is encourage the use of that decibel meter, a sharing of that decibel meter, so that you understand what the noise levels are at your home because we can go onto Google Maps pretty darn quick, and we can look at the distance between your home and the racetrack. And what I spoke of earlier is that the bikes, again, it's Mass General law, it's the responsibility of Mass Environmental Police to take responsibility for it. But there are two noise levels that are allowed on that kind of vehicle. One is 96, and the other is, I believe, 108. And that is at 20 inches from the bike. So, if they have messed around with the exhaust system or anything like that, and many of these bikers do do that, and that's what causes the noise reading to go from 96 of something to something greater than that. And what you can then do is you can go on... There's programs online that you can say, I measured this at this distance, and it's supposed to be this at this distance, and you can actually interpolate to determine whether or not a bike has been taken out of compliance, that the muffling system has been replaced or removed. And again, at that point, you can then turn to the environmental police and to say, to act, that they, in fact, are not in compliance and that they need to... That the actual bike owner has the responsibility. Now, Mr. Plume has also said that he is monitoring noise. Given your report tonight, it's suggesting to me that it's not being measured.
I... Yeah, it's been something that, you know, we really have tried to put up with. We're not trying to be difficult. And as a matter of fact, from the beginning, we felt like maybe... We didn't want to stand in the way of anybody... Anybody a good time, to be honest with you, or try to be difficult. But the bottom line is, it's really just played... It's been a real problem in our life. You know, my son had a birthday party, and we had people at the house. It was obnoxious.
Easter Sunday.
We couldn't even be outside. It was bad.
That was the line.
Yeah.
Outside in East Edmond. Can't even talk to a person next to you.
And again, that would suggest, I mean, rural country road is 40 dBA. A busy road like Route 9, you might get up to 80. So, if you were measuring something beyond those numbers, then there's something wrong with the muffling system.
You know, something as simple, you know, this might be something a little to other people, but, you know, we used to have all kinds of birds in our backyard, and...
They're gone.
They're not there anymore. So, it's just, you know...
Hi, I'm Rob Canyon. I've lived in Brookfield, like, ten or 18, 20 years.
This is my first ever commitment to a town hall for exactly that reason. I've watched within the start of this all gone up, my life, you know, exactly what they said, to where the family parties that we've had, we can no longer have outside. If you look... I live on 11 Boys Avenue, and it's predominantly west wind, and I walk... If any day with a little breeze, I can smell west wind. It's... I can hear... I can tell you what almost... And I'm not a rider. I respect the riders, but it's gotten to the point where we cannot even have a swimming pool that we don't use anymore because just when you go there, you're finding yourself talking louder so you can be heard. And, you know, we talk about the sound. Now's the best time. I mean, we're hearing it bad, but we got leaves on the trees. Once then those trees start falling, you know, and it was with the catapults helping, you know, it's been extreme level. When you talk anywhere after September and those leaves start falling, that noise almost, I would say, 30 to 40 percent increases. So, even if they measure it, I would challenge, what time of year are they measuring it? Because I'll tell you right now, when they're in it before the snowfall, because the riders do it even during the fall, and I'm sure you see the same thing, it's even louder.
Leaves would attenuate the sound.
Absolutely.
And so, it's... Again, what you've measured to where it was and to understand what that delta difference is, again, I would implore you to get data. And again, the gentleman in the back row there has a noise meter that he's nodding his head. Gary is nodding his head there. He has a noise meter. I would implore you to take advantage of that noise meter so that we can actually have data, so that you can actually go towards the environmental police to say enforcement.
And just the question about the noise ordinance. Is there a noise ordinance in town?
No, no, no. It's Mass... The noise levels that I'm talking about are Mass General law.
So, would the town consider raising a noise ordinance that would then override what the state laws then say? And can't we, as a town, say that this has become a disruption? If there's so many people that are...
It's 25 votes at a special?
Can't we lower what the decibel...
For a special? No.
The threshold, right.
At special, it's 10 percent of the...
The threshold that we can accept.
Okay. But 25 for the annual?
10. 10 in an annual.
Okay. Disculpe... Been correct. We will have a special town meeting in the fall. If you were to bring a warrant article forward, which would be a noise ordinance suggestion on the part of the public, you'd need 10 percent of the voters to sign on to that if it were to be brought forth at a special town meeting. If you were to bring it to the annual meeting next spring, that only would require 10 voters to bring that noise... What you are suggesting is a noise ordinance forward to the town.
I don't know if I should address...
Would they have to buy that witness if that happened, or would they be grandfathered?
You'd have to work with the lawyers, for sure.
Yeah, we have to.
I mean, yeah, he's got a business.
So, I do have a question regarding the original...
I thought it was supposed to be a business. I thought it was supposed to be practice.
He's calling himself a business. He says that his lawyer says that he is a business, that he's provided the proper paperwork for being a business. That's the last that I knew from him, that he has the correct permits.
Originally, when that premises was permitted for any type of this activity, wasn't a sound barrier of some point one of the conditions of that permit?
I think that that felt mute because...
I'm still over here, but I'll talk because I...
Yeah, that's better to recuse.
Right.
No.
You know, what they put up there, they really weren't sound barriers. What he... They were only six feet tall, and Miss Antioch Taylor had gone down, and he looked at them, right?
All right. Those were erosion barriers that were put up.
Erosion barriers.
So, as a part of the negotiation, a lack of negotiation, the idea of noise barriers was... Were not approved or not part of the deal. And so, therefore, he does not have strictly what would be termed noise barriers.
So, what would it take to get that?
You'd have to turn to the zoning folks.
Yeah, zoning folks.
But right now, he's got a quote-unquote compliant business, has certain permits that he has, and the only recourse that we have is, in fact, noise, and that is adjudicated by the environmental police.
Now, is this registered? Does he have this registered with the town hall, his business?
That's what I understood in my last communication with him, that his lawyer is saying that he is correctly permitted.
Now, I don't know. Does anybody else have any physicals? Because I have a little one I want to bring up.
So, when the environmental police go down there, do they let the town know that he's all in compliance and everything is good?
No, they're doing their job.
So, they just... They don't... So, does he have to be inspected by anybody other than the environmental police?
Nope, no.
Is there a way for us to ever gain access to how those visits go or speak with anybody in the environmental place? I mean, you know, just...
I could make...
Or how often I guess?
I could only make a suggestion that you could contact them and ask. On top of that, what you could also do is reach out to your local representative and ask that he, on your behalf, work with the environmental police to understand what's going on. So, I would offer that as a suggestion. Marlene?
I just wanted to ask, he has a multi-use permit for that department?
The last I knew Marlene was in a conversation, is that his attorney has said that he is properly permitted.
So, we only know through his attorney. We don't know...
Yeah, I have not followed up.
Has anybody seen the permit?
Nope.
Well, the town would issue the permit, right? The multi-use permit, if it were...
He's...
But if I wanted to see that from the zoning board of appeals?
If it were a special permit, but he doesn't have a special permit, no. That would be... Well, I could go check online to see if it's there, but I doubt it. Gary's next. I'll come back.
The permit is news to us because for most of us, we haven't ever heard that he's been permitted to do anything down there. And he seems to be...
He was quite adamant with me.
I have the impression they can just do anything he damn well pleases down there.
I had...
You know, it'd be interesting for the town to find out what's like when it finds where, in fact, this permit is. And if it... If he is permitted, you would think that there would be some restrictions on it, you know? And obviously, there isn't, you know? And that's what the lawyer is trying to clarify, is just what kind of prescription restrictions, you know?
I'll...
Along with this ruling that the judge made, that she was so out of line to him.
I'll ask for a copy of the permit.
Yeah.
But again, we...
You know, years ago, when they had the races, the Selectmen licensed the issue of permit to have a race. Now, this guy is just doing anything he wants to do, no permits, no this, no that, no guidelines set down or anything. So, I think this lawyer is feeling somebody who would want to...
I will request for a copy of what he believes to be the permit that he has.
And again, I don't mean to be redundant, but so he has the ability to charge people to use the track, okay? And he has the extent of the injuries. So, there's multiple injuries, I understand, from the track, ranging from minor to death.
Yes, sometimes it's done by Brookfield animals. The tank was reached Brookfield while ironically, you know, we were transporting one party from the track, and while we were gone, another incident happened. So, the general occupation must have been skeletal, anywhere from broken bones. Are concerned about broken bones, too? Yes, one could have.
So, I guess one of my other questions is if they weren't... If we found that he wasn't following the regulations, would the town be under any liability at all?
That's a good question.
I'm sorry.
I think that's a good question. That could be a question to show muscle.
I'll ask.
Could be a liability.
It's possible, but just an objective aside, he suggested, speaking to somebody at the state level, if you didn't catch it earlier, seven to go these days, sitting right there tomorrow from 2:00 to 3:00.
Two to three.
I would very receptive. So, even if all we can make is if you get a downwind, if one of you can't, please ask I with this question. Please ask I with this question. Please ask the current EDL call with this race something. But I would very receptive. The man has always been very sensitive to us, so just...
Right. I think we need to be moving.
Can I just talk on the safety issue?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't regret anybody, you know, having safety and having the ambulance down there. But the way I feel, if they're down there taking... If you're down there taking care of, you know, somebody at the racetrack and say that they're not somebody from... They're out of state, I think it's spoiling, I mean, we... And then Brookfield residents need the ambulance, and we have to have somebody from out of town come in. When I can talk from personal experience, we have two of the best here in the town of Brookfield. And it's a shame that they're off on this call, you know, for somebody doesn't even live here in the town, and we have to wait around for another community to get their ambulance people.
That's always a tough sell on that because then it goes into, well, you know, boat parades, poker runs, and anything else that's, you know... There may have been other times where I'd neutralized him, but there's only one time that I'm aware of that it was. And I think without exception, all those calls are on Sundays. So, we have a little bit of advantage to staff and by neutralizing partners, it's a little bit better on weekends from a caller's perspective.
But I've done a little research in other water stations like this. They have... They hired ambulance service to be down there for the day when they are doing these races. Shouldn't they do that?
Well, that's what we've always been under the impression was because it was only being recognized as a practice facility. We're always led to believe, well, it doesn't fall under the same guidelines of national professional organizations that would govern these things. It was just being used as practice. And that's good. If it was that he had to hire it out, we're not in a position to hire out ourselves because with one thought, one group leadership, he would have to outsource that to a private organization. There's a couple in the area that are out of city. We're not in a position to...
Oh, I understand. I know different people have had private ones, big private ambulance, what does that mean?
Linda, I'll take away two actions with respect to the permitting and the liability, and I think we need to be moving on.
Okay, all right.
Karen, if you could send me a copy of the court finding.
But I'd just like to thank everyone that came up and spoke tonight. I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, we don't have it yet.
No, the one from the last one. The last one.
Yeah. All right. All right, now, we're going to move on to the zoning enforcement officer, his discussion and further action on 6 Maple Street. We've got this from zoning enforcement officer Nicholas Tomo, and he says, "Be advised as July 25, 2017, non-compliance fines for 6 Maple Street Brookfield maps have accrued in the amount of $600, and also, non-compliance fines for 26 Allen Road Brookfield have also reached $600." Both properties are owned by Mr. Holcraft, and the total of these... This is $1,200. And he would like the Board of Selectmen to instruct him what he would like us to do.
Mr. Snyder has refused himself for the purpose of this discussion because I'm one Mr. Snyder has refused himself for the purpose of this discussion, because I'm one of the plaintiffs. And so just to bring the board up to speed, there was in fact a meeting of the zoning board of appeals last Wednesday. Uh, through a discussion, there was a review of complaints on appeal, by appeal. Uh, and with that, uh, the, the decision was moved to continue that discussion until August 1st at 6:00 PM. The purpose of that, uh, decision to continue was related to whether or not there are statutes of limitations on special permits. And so we will wait at, at that time. Uh, what I'm not speaking to are the original cease and desist orders by the zoning enforcement officer. That's a decision that you might want to make, uh, this evening, that's your choice. Uh, but at, at this point, uh, what I'm suggesting is that on, uh, August 1st, there will be a determination whether or not a special permit that was issued from Mr. Holcraft in 2003, and I'll need item 13. This special permit is issued for a period of two years, so subject to renewal for another two-year period upon the applicant's compliance with all conditions of this permit on the operation of the business during the permit period. And it's my contention that he has not operated to the original special permit, but special permit has expired, and therefore he does not have a right to operate the business at Six South Maple. And again, it would be my suggestion that we wait until that determination as to what actions we might want to take by the zoning enforcement officer. Madam Chair?
Well, from what I had talked to the zoning enforcement officer today, and he would like us to instruct him, he'd like to follow through, and he'd like to bring court action on this.
Wow. Okay, so my...
Madam Chair, may I approach when I get a chance?
Well, in a minute, in a minute you'll have your chance, but I'm waiting to hear Ms. Coffin.
My understanding, Madam Chair, is that we, in essence, have, have three options. We can instruct him to just continue on the course of leaving the, the first notice in place. We can instruct him to, which would mean that we'd continue to accumulate the daily fines at the level of the first offense. Um, we could instruct him to issue a second citation for cease and desist, uh, which would then go to the second offense level of, of civil, uh, civil fines. Uh, or we could instruct him to go to the, uh, county court and go ahead and, and file this as a, as an action with the state.
He, he would like to, I guess, go to the, you know, the regular, the court and file this. And I don't know if we want to wait until something comes up with a hearing on the first, or if we want to start an action on this now.
It's my recommendation to wait.
To wait. Do you feel that way?
I, I don't have a problem with at least issuing a second cease and desist order, considering the condition of that property. Because I will tell you, I took some photos of that property over the weekend, and it was in, uh, absolutely horrendous condition, or at least one of them, the one that's, that's here on Route 9, uh, in, in absolutely a condition that is non-compliant with the conditions of that special permit. So I, I think at, at a minimum, despite the fact that the zoning board of appeals is going to be hearing it, again, I think we need to be serious about, uh, it, it's something we, we haven't done a great job of as a town, and we need to start getting better at enforcement when there's guidelines for people, so...
I understand that, yeah.
Um, my recommendation, I'd like to make a motion that we at least, at least instruct him to, um, issue a, a second offense citation for both properties. Um, and, and then have that in place, uh, pending some input from the zoning board of appeals. That's what I, my recommendation, or that's what my motion would be.
All right. Well, we'll have some more discussion. Mr. Hol, I'll, I'll take you up. Mr. Holcraft?
Yeah, I want to come up.
Well, by the way, you left me so quickly the other night. You know where the wastebasket is in this room?
Yeah, good, put it in. Um, first of all, my property Route 9, we're operating under a tag sale law right now. The shed has been shut down, so you can't find me for doing anything on that property. I'm operating under this tag sale law, okay?
Tag sale, if it's a tag sale law, are you, are you charging for these things?
That's correct, I am. Sign's been there for years. Number two, you two were at a meeting at the Z B A board, and you opened, you're violation of the open meeting law, because you both were in the collusion of trying to get me, and this on a personal attack. So if you do file it tonight, I will file it. Do you understand? You two were both, you did not post a meeting, but the both of you were going to be discussing town business. And you were discussing town business.
No, it's an open meeting. I can sit in the audience of any open meeting.
That's okay, that's okay, but you, that's okay, you say what you want.
But from my understanding, Mr. Snyder was up here as a citizen, and he was here with his own counsel. So it's not as though he was up here representing the Board of Selectmen.
So as long as you don't, if you do something tonight, then I'll give you a collusion, okay?
Go for it.
Oh, I will. I absolutely will. I'm just giving you, I'm just giving, I'm just telling you, I'm just talking to you, we stand.
Who is your lawyer?
I don't have to discuss that at this time. You'll find out, you'll find out on the first.
Okay.
Just like I told your lawyer, it's only his business, okay? All right, so anyway, that's what I wanted to say, so, so you can find me all you want, but I'm not operating under that whatever. And then we'll decide, we'll decide if we have a permit or not.
If you, if you do, are operating as, say, a tag sale business?
That's correct.
And you're collecting money, is there somebody up there collecting the money?
It's on a, on a system. It's done all the time.
I've never seen that. I've never, I've seen people...
Actually, there's, there's very, there's very specific guidelines. In fact, I, I'm glad that you've said that.
There is no specific guidelines on tag sale laws. There's no bylaw in this town on tag sale. So don't bring your propaganda to the table again, Beth.
I said I'd need to research it.
There's nothing to research.
There's nothing in Master along?
Well, I know that...
We're talking about the town of Brookfield.
Madam Chair, do you want me to do at least some, I don't want to involve the, the town council, because I don't think it's, it's worth spending money on their time, but do you mind if I do a little research regarding tax sales?
Well, I can give you a little experience myself. A year after I, um, retired, I, I went up to the town of Palmer, and I trained a new town clerk up there. And the town of Palmer has a tag sale law. And before you can, um, before you can have one, you have to come in and you have to say that you're having a tag sale, and you have to tell the date and the hours that you're doing it, and the town keeps a copy, and there are rules and regulations that go along with that.
Yeah, once I can do with Brookfield there, Miss Madam Chairman.
Well, we could probably do the same thing here in Brookfield.
More regulations, more laws, well, putting the thumb down on the people again, yeah.
But do you have, I, I've never seen a sign up there that says you're running a tag sale.
Well, maybe you should clean your glasses off.
It just says no dumping.
Clean my glasses off.
Clean your glasses off.
Well, that's kind of insulting, Mr. Holcraft.
No, it's not. I'm just saying, go up there and take a peek.
Is this sign new?
No, it's bad. Well, I keep new ones up there all the time. I usually had it on the back of the fence, now I get it on the front.
All right, so, so I think, so, Madam Chairman, under advice of my counsel, under chapter 268A, paragraph 23B C, I'm disclosing that I am a complaining party on another action. We've just talked about that. In the case of the complaint filed by a neighbor during the Wednesday, um, meeting, uh, I am acting, uh, in this case as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I received a, uh, a verbal complaint related to 90 Lake Road, where it appears from an aerial photo that Mr. Holcraft is either storing trash or junk at 90 Lake Road. I asked Mr. Holcraft whether or not he will voluntarily submit to an inspection of that property by representatives of the town.
Send me a letter.
Absolutely.
I can buy one sec, then go over what I've been doing.
Okay. Just for the note, we will in fact send you, send you that. Uh, it, let it be known that Mr. Holcraft is not a licensed hauler, a trash hauler in the town, or a junk dealer in the town of Brookfield. Let it also be known that this town, uh, under the zoning bylaws, page 10, section 4, paragraph B, prohibited uses in all districts, item 5, and I quote, "All open-air storage of junk or salvage materials are expressly, expressly prohibited in all zoning areas."
Read the other side of the bylaws. There's two sides to that.
I want to make sure you have a copy.
I have it, I have it. Read both sides. You need to read the other side of the bylaw. There's two sides to that bylaw.
Okay, can you share the other side of the bylaw?
No, you share it.
Well, I don't have it with me.
You're the one that's bringing it up. You share it.
I, I, I shared what I'm going to share.
I'll have to show you the other side.
Okay, looking forward to it. We'll probably see it once, uh, next Wednesday, or next Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yeah, actually, remember that August 1st is a Tuesday.
You will see me again.
Yeah, look forward to it.
Oh, I'm looking forward to it too.
So, um, I would like to, well, Mr. Snyder can't get involved with this, but I would like to entertain a motion that we have the zoning enforcement officer issue a second cease and desist order on Six South Maple and 26 Allen Road.
Madam, you have that motion.
And I will second that motion, and is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Jim.
Yes.
You're not going to include, uh, Lake Road or 28 Allen Road as well?
I thought you had 90 Lake Road in there.
Oh, 90, no, I don't have that. No, one that we were talking about with the fines is the, is the Six Allen, I mean, the Six South Maple and the 26 Allen Road. That's the ones that already had, that he had filed a cease and desist order on those.
I'll, I'll file a separate motion then.
That's a separate motion for that one.
Officer, take a look into the complaint that we received tonight.
But these were, we were talking about the, uh, first two that had the fines on them.
I thought the first one also included 26 and 28 Allen Road.
No, it doesn't have, it's only Six, Six Maple, Six South Maple, and 26 Allen Road. It does not have 28.
If you get a complaint about either of the other ones?
Those would have to be separate, because these are, these were filed first. There were cease and, cease and desist order, they were filed first, and these are the ones that we want, a second one.
I think you have no problem getting a complaint on either of the other two locations.
But we would need to have a, a written complaint on that.
Okay.
Okay? So, but we will, we're going to order him to do that, the second one on that, okay? So do we want to also make a, um, a motion that we will have a cease and desist order on, um, not, what is it? 90 Lake Road?
90 Lake Road.
I think you need an inspection first.
We need an inspection, okay, so we'll have the zoning enforcement officer go around there, and we'll do an inspection. So Karen, do you want to have Nick go down and inspect 90 Lake Road?
Are you going to use that in motion? I'll make a motion to have the zoning enforcement officer, uh, at, at least contact the property owner and attempt an inspection of 90 Lake Road.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any more discussion on this? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, our next one here is, um, on the email changeover and update and discussion on that. Uh, we've been, uh, we got, we, uh, talked to Tom George, and he said that he was waiting, this came in today. Right, Karen?
Yeah.
And he's waiting from, from Canon, what is?
That's the, um, the company with the email.
Okay, he's waiting from the, from, uh, he's waiting for reply from Canon on a few, um, things that he has to still do on it. And he says he wants to make sure everyone is set up before he throws the switch. And he also told Beth that she can contact me and be provided with that info.
Yep.
Okay.
Were you satisfied that you didn't talk to him?
I did not get a chance to talk to him yet. I, I've been a little schedule constrained. I'm going to try to break loose some time.
Right now, I don't think he's, he's not ready.
He's really not.
Right, exactly.
And the good news is, he did say that if we wanted to keep outlook, that we could, because that's definitely what a lot of people...
And that, that was, that was my biggest concern, and my research was saying that we ought to be able to keep it. It just hadn't been made clear to people, and that's why I was saying that really what I'm most concerned about, it's not that I want to gum up the works in doing this transition. It's just that I want to make sure we do some education upfront with users before we flip the switch. That's my biggest concern, because I've been through these type of transitions before in organizations, and it can be very disruptive if you don't take a little time to, to get with the operators.
Thing is, like, I know that you wanted to have a couple different sessions, but he, he holds a full-time job, and a lot of things that he's done for us, he hasn't even charged us for this, so...
I understand that. I didn't know if maybe the company that's doing the transit, it wasn't so much I was wondering if Tom could do it. I was wondering if, if, if we, you know, even if we incurred a slight fee to do it, is, is to bring in somebody from the company to do that training for him, was, was more what I was thinking.
I think, I think, and I think that's why he said he was working with them.
Yeah, he's working with them.
It has to do with the, with the outlook. I mean, if it's outlook, everything's fine, but not it to...
Right, exactly.
But is it necessary? Because I don't know if people, the people that are concerned, from what I understand, are sticking with outlook.
And, and so long as they can stick with outlook, it's not, it, it should be seamless for them, so then it's not an issue. That, so my biggest concern was, can people keep outlook? If they can keep outlook, great. If they can't keep outlook, we need to figure out what needs to happen to make sure that the, the users are comfortable with it.
He thinks we can keep it, and I think that's what he's waiting for, is how to do it.
How to do it, yeah. Because that, that might, that may, that may wind up increasing our implementation cost a slight amount, because I think they may have to do some, some additional work to do that. So we, we need to understand that better.
Okay, do we have anything more on that?
Nope, I think Larry's next.
Okay, we'll move on now to, um, I T discussion. There's been a lot going on with this discussion, and I think we had, we had given, for a long time now. And we use Tantascor right now, and I know a lot of the, uh, people up here in the town hall are not too happy with Tantascor. And, um, I know two different departments don't even, three departments don't even use him, use them. So we had put Carrie and, the town accountant, Carrie Polakowski, in charge of getting some, uh, quotes from two different companies. And she got, uh, two quotes from, it's called Tech Samurai?
Samurai.
Samurai, and how do you say Larry?
Exebia?
Exebia, and that's Larry Van Cott, who used to do our work for us. Yeah, and so they both gave us a quote, um, Samurai, Tech Samurai, is 18,000. And additional work would be, uh, 75 to $100 per hour if we needed him. And Larry's quote is 16,560, and additional work would only be 65 dollars per hour. And, uh, she's been going after these quotes for about six months now, and all she's got is two quotes.
Really?
That's all she's got?
She told me, Linda, that, she said they were basically, she couldn't give a recommendation, because she thought they were both comparable in competency and in price and everything. She just...
And we've had, we have used, before we got involved with Tantascor, we have used Larry Van Cott, who has Exebia, I think you call it. And Larry's very good, and we're very, we have a lot of confidence in Larry. We need him. He's right here within, say, 15, 20 minutes to help us with our needs. And I think the water department uses him, and the highway does right now. And they still want to be able to use him. They don't care to have Tantascor at all.
Yeah, and, and we, I think this is an easy, uh, decision in reviewing the different proposals with Carrie. It suggests that Larry Van Cott has the better proposal of the two, and, uh, it's, it's an easy to do to get all the departments using the same person. So I'd, I'd make a recommendation that we move forward with Larry Van Cott's proposal.
I will second that motion. Do we have any discussion on it?
I mean, my only concern is that, I think one of the things we probably need to do is ensure that we clearly communicate what kind of level of service that, that we're expecting, because one of the challenges that we experienced at a number, a couple of years back, when Larry was our primary I T person, was there was really no proactive planning or communication around what we would need to do to deal with at the time. I think, uh, Microsoft was going to fail to support.
Storage.
I think X P.
Yep.
Uh, we also, for years, were non-compliant with state law under his guidelines with regards to our email storage and our backups. Um, I think if we're going to be paying him 16,000 dollars a year as a set fee, because I think before that, when he was doing that work, he was only getting paid like the 65 dollars an hour, okay? So basically, he was doing whatever, a, and, and, and so I don't want to speak ill of him, because we weren't paying him to do a real job of managing our I T at the time, okay? So I, I get that. If, if you're getting paid 65 dollars an hour, and everybody is like trying to squeeze you for your 15-minute increments, that, yeah, but, but you, you understand what I'm saying. But, but I think the expectation, though, is if we enter this contract, that we, and I don't know if it's in the proposal.
I think it is.
That on a regular basis, that he do a review of the condition of our I T, of, of the go-forward needs, that he meet with the C I P C and communicate, you know, as part of that base, 16,500 dollars, that, that we get at least an annual update of what the plan is to keep us current and compliant. Because those are the two things that we really have to be aware of.
Okay, well, I talked to the, um, accountant today about a lot of this. And she says, um, we need a total reconstruction of all the services here. She says we don't have to replace any of the equipment, because the equipment is here already.
Yep.
And she says we have to do a reconstruction of the platform.
Yep.
Now, I'm not into all the I T.
Yep.
Yeah, she, she and I can geek out for a little while about that.
And then she said also, she said, "The network was not set up properly here, because no, nobody can network with anybody here."
Right, but, I, so the, the challenge is, is that Tantascor did some of that, but what little network they have is from after they took over it, and, and Larry had not at the time, because he didn't have that guidance from the selectmen, set up anything but a little bit of peer-to-peer networking here or there.
Well, Larry never was...
He wouldn't, he wouldn't want Tantascor, if those computers in Tantascor, he didn't really do anything.
He didn't do anything.
What he really used him for was for, if we had the issue, we had to fix it. But if, look in, look in the, um, in the contract, because I know Carrie's very computer savvy.
Yeah, she is.
Sure, that it's in there, because she would not have said, she would not have recommended both of them if it was...
Because she has worked for this one before, she said.
Yeah, she had experience with both.
Both.
Oh, she has worked with both companies?
Yes, she has.
Okay.
And it really was, of the two, this was, Larry was the more cost-effective.
Yeah.
So that's the decision, or recommendation I'm making.
I'll make that recommendation.
We got a motion, and it's just like Beth.
We, both of us are recommending Larry. We had a motion for that.
Okay, so the things that he's listing, okay, so they're going Barracuda. Um, just as an F Y I, we won't need Barr... Just as an FYI, we won't need Barracuda backup using the email server, service that we're going to?
Right, that we didn't, we didn't tell them. We had to talk to Larry all the other one, and that's what we asked, so.
All right, so.
But that's back to a strategic discussion with both of them.
Yeah.
And why it's good to move forward with Larry now, is that that can, that conversation can happen.
Right, okay, I'm comfortable at this point. Oh, do you have a, do you already have the motion?
Yeah, we have a motion, yeah.
So, we've had our discussion, all in favor of hiring-
Leonard.
Larry Van Cott for our IT server, for our IT company?
Aye.
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 Linda's second.
I made the motion, Linda's second.
I seconded it. Okay, so you can let Larry know.
All right.
And then we'll let, have to let Tantascor know that we're going to no longer need their services. Okay. All right, now, under other here, this is, this was brought to us, it's on, to do some public hearings on, for, they want, well, I guess, I had talked to the building inspector, and Mike Siri, I think, has he talked to you also, about going along with-
Mass General Act 139.
Mass General Act 139.
Mass General Act, yep.
Yeah, where the selectmen would hold a hearing to determine whether, you know, the different properties are nuisance in the neighborhood.
I'll chair the meeting if you need me to.
Yeah, okay, and we'd like to have, have them done all in September on 9/5, and it would be at 7:00 PM, 30 Kimball Street.
So where are we going? What's the timing?
Okay, that would be September 5th.
Yep.
Seventeen, at 7:00 PM, that would be 30 Kimball Street, and then also the same day, at 7:15, it would be 16 North Brookfield Road, and that's another one we put on, and 9/5, also at 7:30 PM, we would have 4 South Maple Street. And I guess Mr., is Herb gone?
Yes.
I guess Herb said that he would take care of removing these properties, borrowers. And so we have the three of these to sign, so I would like to entertain a motion for the chair to sign these three public hearing notices.
You have my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, do we have the, you gave me one of the plans tonight.
I gave you the state grant, but I'd like to hang tight under other.
On the announcement.
Okay.
I actually have the original that I gave Linda earlier.
It's in correspondence.
In correspondence.
Yeah.
Well, we've got other, do we have the correspondence?
It was there early in the-
It was.
The red folder?
Do you have your original, or is it left in?
I know you gave it to me, Clarence, when you came in.
Yeah, you had it out here.
Right there, it says it's-
Here it is, okay, right here, here, okay. All right, okay, and under other?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Yeah, she has the original.
I have the original, I was going to get out and read. Okay. Okay, it was sent to Mr. Contra, and he's not here yet.
That's why it was hand-delivered.
Yes, okay. Okay, July 20th, 2017, and this came from Governor Charles Baker and Lieutenant Governor Carol, Karen Polito.
That letter was from, handed from Governor Baker to Representative Bertham for our benefit.
Okay, all right. It says, "Congratulations, I am pleased to notify you that the town of Brookfield has received an FY 2017 Massachusetts Community Block Grant Award of $363,699, and I want to thank you for your commitment to the community development efforts in the town of Brookfield. Through this funding and your continued support, we hope to assist you in strengthening your community and enhancing the quality of your life of your residents. You will be receiving further instructions from the Department of Housing and Community Development on the next steps. Please feel free to contact Mark Southard at state dot MA dot US if you have any questions." And that was from the governor and lieutenant governor.
That is the grants of four.
Yeah, and they're for two, the two projects are for the infrastructure and senior center and planning projects and ADA environmental remediation.
For the design, for the town lines.
The town hall.
That's great, that's very nice, that's, what's-
Madam Chairperson, could you acknowledge the people in town who were instrumental in pushing that grant forward, a significant amount of money, and some of the citizens of the town?
Yeah, I know, I know, it was Chris Clark was involved with it, and Cindy Thompson, and Mary Lou Knight, Dawn, no, Dawn wasn't, no, it was-
We're missing her, Ellen.
Beth Roberts.
Yep.
So I'd like to acknowledge them and thank them for all the hard work they've done.
That's our, that's our grand advisory board, right, the CBDG Advisory Board.
Yes.
Yes.
They quietly do some really excellent work for the town.
Yep.
It's nice, so, we appreciate all the work that they do for these grants, and this is a nice grant to give.
Huge.
It is. Okay, do we have anything else that we'd like to bring up this evening?
With the hour, what I would only have is a suggestion that came about from last Wednesday's meeting that we may wish to consider, is that by sitting at this end of the room, we have people coming and going from the door, as we noted tonight, that had to come in and sign in and the like, and the suggestion that was made was to, in fact, turn the meeting around, where we would, in fact, sit at the other end of this room and face this way, such that the people can enter from the back and not disrupt the meeting. So I'm not asking for a decision tonight, but it was an idea that was shared with me, and I wanted to share it with the board.
Okay, that is, I think at one time, we've even had them sitting on this side of the room, we've had them at all different areas, I know.
I just, there was a suggestion made, and I wanted to share.
I don't have any prob, it's a lighting match, it's good down there.
It's, I mean, it's just turning on one more bank of lights.
I don't have any problem with that at all, if this is what we want to do. We can try it and have Paul set it up the next time.
We could do, we could do a test for our next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting, Marla?
I was just going to say that I think the reason we put this is because of that picture.
I'm sure. It's a great backdrop.
But it is, it does make a lot of, I agree, it does make a lot of interference and people coming in and out.
That's what people were complaining about.
That's what it is. Mr. Taff?
May I ask, does anybody know what the historic value is of the history of the-
The counter?
That was the town clerk's counter.
That was, that was the town clerk's counter, and that has been here in the building since we, they built it back in 1904, and it's a piece of history here with the town. And Mrs. Plumhead discussed it with me earlier, and she agrees with me, and she took a poll of everybody up here in the town hall, and we would like to see that stay here in town hall, we don't want to see it, you know, given away or sold to anybody. And it's in two, and if we could use the upstairs, you know, it could be moved upstairs, because it has been moved in here, and it's two pieces that move it. And right now, I don't know if any, they were using it for storage, a lot of the, a few of the different departments, and what a nice, we thought a good thing would to be if we were able to use the upstairs again. It could go off in a corner, and the board of registrars could use that as a check-in desk, you know, for voting, if we're, you know, if we get a handicap chair or something to go upstairs. But we do, we'd like to keep it, we don't want it to go, because somebody had offered to buy it a few years ago, and we refused them. So we've lost too many pieces here in the town hall, and I think that's a piece of history that we want to stay here.
And maybe we should share it with Bill and the team?
I talked to Bill about, Bill met me tonight coming in.
Excellent.
And I talked to Bill about that already.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So, motion to, well?
Motion-
Do you adjourn?
Do adjourn at 8:06.
Yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Phil.